All right.
Yep.
Great, good.
All right, folks, we're going to go ahead and get started with our business meeting. Today's date is July 22, 2025, the time is 2:00 PM. In attendance are Commissioners Eberlein, Duncan, and Matarri. I'm going to call this meeting to order, and we will begin with a moment of silence. Okay, and next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. JP, could we get you to start that? Hold up. If you're on the telephone, if you could mute it, that'd be great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Only one if the Chair chooses, and that would be to handle item 27 ahead of item 19.
You good with that, Commissioner Eberlein? All right, we'll put 27 to be number one in business. Any other changes? Public comment. Come on down.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ron Hartman for the record. Topic is item 27. It looks like it's an action item, which means I'm assuming you're going to vote on a contract for Hayden Law Enforcement. It's my understanding it still doesn't cover the cost of the service that they're trying to be provided. I also got a copy of today's latest spreadsheet of the overall stance on the next year's budget. And this is with regards to giving employees a 2% COLA, which I 100% agree they probably deserve. But with a 2% COLA increase, even adding a 3% property tax increase to all of us, you're still 700, almost $766,000 in the red. Now, what I don't know is if there's some kind of delta difference between this Hayden Law Enforcement versus what they're going to pay for. And since you're still 3/4 of a million dollars in the red, to me, the first place to make a cut to at least get it to the 3% tax increase is any shortfall that they don't cover in their contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody on the telephone? Hearing none. I'll take a motion to approve the meeting minutes. Items 1 through 9.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Matarri.
Aye. Consent calendar.
I move that we approve the consent calendar, items 10 through 17.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Matarri.
Aye. And payables.
I move that we approve the payables for July 14 through 18, 2025, in the amount of $2,050,071.53, along with jury panel payments in the amount of $5,957.85.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Matarri.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, our first business item is actually going to be item number 27. And this is, let's read it into the record here. Actually, item, yeah, 27. Status update item, Hayden Law Enforcement Contract Options. And as the Board, I believe, knows, I have been working with our auditing department, as well as with the city, to talk with them, and even the sheriff, about the actual costs that the county incurs by providing law enforcement services. And we have been at a pretty significant difference. Last week, a letter came in from the City of Hayden. It was addressed to me. I don't know if you were on the distribution list, so I wanted to make sure you at least had it. And it talked about, you know, what the cost is to the county and what the city is willing to do. And the first thing I'd like to say is that I think that the city has really put forth a fantastic effort in trying to get us a lot closer. They looked at interest income to increase it. We were at just over 1.1 million. They are now just under 1.4 million, which is a significant jump. But we're still a little bit in the red. And so I was looking at this agreement, and I wanted to present this to the Board, to see where the Board's head is on this. The first question that comes to mind is that we're entertaining purchasing a vehicle for the City of Hayden. And I have to ask why the county is in the dealership business for selling police vehicles. Last year, we had a contract with Hayden that asked for two vehicles. Those two vehicles that they paid for are sitting on a lot right now because we just got them, and they're waiting to be outfitted. And so what happens is, is that we end up using county vehicles to, for the deputies. Meanwhile, we have brand-new vehicles that haven't even been deployed yet because there's buying windows, it takes time to get these things set up. And I don't understand why we are in the car business, to be honest. We should be amortizing these vehicles over the life of the vehicle and incorporating that in the cost of providing this service. We do have a situation where, right now, these vehicles, even though the city gives us money to buy them, we pay for the maintenance, we pay for the fuel, and we pay for the insurance. If you own a vehicle, you should be paying for that stuff. But that never gets captured into the contract. And so that's what I've been working with the auditing department to start to look at how these costs can at least be captured. What is before you is my proposal, should the Board want to proceed, to give these options back to the City of Hayden. The first one is that I don't think we should be in the business of selling cars. If they want to buy their own cars, they can buy their own cars for their police department, but we buy our cars for the sheriff's office, and we amortize them. We have a city council member who has said on the record a couple of times, at least on, you know, videos and so forth, that we may not want to renew this contract. And because of that, I don't understand why we're buying a vehicle, and what, are we going to just turn the keys over? What condition are we going to turn it over in? Is it going to have a full tank? Will it have new brakes? None of that stuff ever gets discussed. So I would argue that they pay for the expense of these vehicles on a per-year basis. And so options 1 and 2 address that. We have some cars that have been purchased in the past, and we have two cars that were purchased for FY '25 that have not seen service yet. They're brand-new. They're waiting to be outfitted. And so between the amount that the city is willing to pay or can pay this year, I would propose that if they chose to use those vehicles as a credit towards this contract, that we would offer a lower overhead rate of 40%, because we've not been capturing this overhead. There's a lot of support staff that goes into serving a deputy. If you look at the letter that was sent to us from the City of Hayden, and albeit, it was great, they came up a lot, it only addresses the loaded rate of the salary. It does not address all the other expenses that go with a patrol deputy, including the maintenance and fuel, bullets, equipment, things like that, and the support staff for that, dispatch, records, a little bit of command staff, things like that. So option 1 would be with the lieutenant, that they would be willing to use the vehicles as a credit for this contract. There would be a 40% overhead rate, and with the lieutenant, it would come out to $1,433,000 and $33,042. The amount that Hayden proposed or was willing to pay was $1,390,000, which would leave a delta or a difference of $43,042 to get the lieutenant. The only other stipulation I would add is that I would propose that we have a buyout for the lieutenant, because, like I said, one of the city council members has stated that they're not sure they want to renew the contract next year, they'll get it through this year, but after that, they may not. We're stuck with the lieutenant. Anyone who's been in business knows, if you're going to hire a person, you know, it's bad business to hire them, and then if something changes, you've just got to let them go. Now, granted, that is how things often work in the private sector, but I don't think that that's fair to find a deputy, promote that deputy to lieutenant. Next year, we don't renew the contract. And so I would propose that the Board ask for a buyout of a one-year salary, loaded salary, so that way we could find a position for that person and not incur that expense. So that's where I would be with option 1. Option 2 would reduce, would exchange the lieutenant for a lower-cost deputy. That would put the City of Hayden at $20,000, $20,007 in the green, and we could reduce the amount they contribute, assuming that the vehicles were used as a credit. And if the city does not want to give the county or use those vehicles as a credit, I would propose that the overhead be exactly what we have, which is, we've calculated it to be 60%. That we would charge for the insurance of the vehicles, and we would bill the city monthly for the maintenance and fuel. It's a cost to the county, we incur it. I don't understand why we would be subsidizing that. And if we reduced the number of deputies by three, which would include the lieutenant, the delta difference between what they pay and what it would cost the county would be $2,571. And so I propose that the Board, should it decide that we give these options to the City of Hayden, they can look at them and decide what works best for them.
So Hayden doesn't have a copy of this?
Not right now, because I actually am working with the Board first. As you know, Commissioner Duncan, it's all about the spirit of the Board first. I talk with you. The only other person I've talked to about this is, I've run it by the sheriff, just to see where his head is with it. But I believe that anything that comes from me, or you, or Commissioner Eberlein, should come from the Board before the Board sees it. So I think you can appreciate that. I think I've been very consistent with that. So this discussion is for the Board to decide if we want to propose that for the city to pick an option.
So you want me to just take, like, I've seen this for five minutes, and you want me to make a decision right now, or so?
Ooh, we can talk about it.
I guess the problem I have is this letter's dated July 16th, there's nothing in my packet. So that would have been nice to have ahead of time. So, and this as well. I mean, I don't know why the Board couldn't have this ahead of time, so we had time to digest it, so we could have meaningful conversation.
Mm-hmm. And, you know, it was just really wrapped up yesterday afternoon.
So that's still a half a day I could have had.
I totally understand, and I can appreciate where you're coming from with it. And this is a presentation for the Board. We can, you know, address this later in the week if you want, and give it back to the city. They're obviously under a time crunch. I think ultimately, this is the most dollars that's expressed in the letter that they're willing or can pay this year. And so then it's just a matter of, how do we want to set this up so that either the county mitigates, you know, the offset of the additional expense that we incur? You know, and we've been through this before, where, you know, we had a presentation, and that presentation, albeit, was compelling, and I understand the human argument. It's still, we're asking for citizens in the county to subsidize the additional expense incurred for the City of Hayden. And at some point, I think, you know, with the discussions that I've had with the City of Hayden, which are on video, which you can watch if you haven't already, I think people understand at the city that what they're paying for their law enforcement is significantly less as a percent of their budget compared to almost every similar-sized city in the state.
But would you agree that the unincorporated area has benefit by having all these extra officers that can be used in time of need?
Well, that's been the problem, actually, Commissioner Duncan, and I think you, of all people, should be aware of that. There are no extra officers, okay? How many patrol deputies have we added in the last 10 years?
Well, we've added several for this contract.
Patrol deputies?
We should have, yeah.
I don't believe we've added that much, unless the sheriff has something to add to that. But from my understanding, as a whole, we've been allocating sheriff's deputies. They've been adding deputies to the contract, but I'm not so sure we've been adding
So we're getting funds for them but not backfilling, like the SROs.
Well, correct. Or they would have, the bodies that we have increased to patrol staff were dedicated to go to a separate function and not just fold it back into the patrol ranks for the general county purposes.
Yeah. We haven't been full on patrol until just basically now, is that correct? So, I mean, every deputy that gets allocated any contract is, we haven't ever filled up the patrol ranks. And you know that, because that's why we've had to give such a large raise a couple of years ago, just to get 3% behind Quarter Lane, because we were losing them faster than we could replace and hire.
I think that, I think both of you are right. I think that it's just a matter of wording. There is a benefit for the community when the region can share resources. It's generally cheaper for the contract city and the region. That's kind of the benefit of contract law enforcement. So when there is a large-scale event in the county, we can use those resources. When there's a large-scale event in the city, we can use some of those resources. So I think, I think you're both right. I think that it was just a matter of wording.
Well, what I was referring to is the fact that we've been short on patrol all along, right? So we haven't set, and we have not set where we should be for a service level for the county. And yet, we've been adding more deputies to a contract. So we've been trying to fill original spots, and we're adding these deputies to a contract. So technically, I would argue that we haven't gotten to a point where we should be to begin with. And a contract, if it's paying for the additional deputies, yes, I agree, you get that additional support. But we're just now full. I mean, you know, we, you know, we've been, you've been plugging holes in the ship pretty much since day one.
You are correct. We, the Board, Sheriff's Office, the City Council inherited a bad situation that I wish they would have had this conversation with somebody that has the business sense like you 20 years ago, that said, hey, your model for your growth cannot be sustained with the law enforcement officers that you are suggesting that this city needs. It should have been done 20 years ago.
But I would agree that if we're getting paid correctly for the additional deputies that you provide in a contract, then that is additional law enforcement resources that can be used to back up the unincorporated part of the county, and vice versa. We just haven't been there yet.
Right. You're correct. But I think you're both correct, because I think what you were trying to explain is, did I explain that correctly?
Yep, you did. That's fine if you want to give this to Hayden and see if they're, what they would like, what their answer is.
Commissioner Eberlein?
I like option number 1.
Yeah, well, if you're good with providing them the options, then we'll get that out today, and they can talk about it in their next meeting. I don't believe we need a motion for that. Okay, well, thank you. On to item 19. Bid Award. This is bid number informal. HHW Collection and Disposal Agreement with Solid Waste. And we have our director, John Phillips.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Phillips for the record. As required, the solid waste department informally solicited the transport, for the transport and final disposal services related to certain household hazardous waste that we collect at our two transfer stations, like, for example, various flammable, toxics, acid spaces, that kind of thing. Three bids were received. After review of the bids by both legal and the solid waste department, it's been determined that Advanced Chemical Transport LLC, owned by Republic Services, has submitted the lowest-priced responsive bid. It's the recommendation of the solid waste department to award this bid to Advanced Chemical Transport LLC.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion to bid award, bid informal, HHW Collection and Disposal Agreement, Solid Waste.
Advanced Chemical Transport LLC. Second.
Commissioner Eberlein.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Matarri.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item 20. Lender Acknowledgement, AAL-2022-2000. It's a landlord's release and consent, T-Hanger in Hayden. It's with our airport. And do we have Kim Stevenson on the line?
Yes, Commissioners, thank you. Kim Stevenson for the record. This is a basic lender acknowledgement for T-Hanger Hayden, that basically, if they default on a loan that they currently have, the tenant's lender is allowed to access and potentially move improvements off of the property or re-lease that property if defaulted on the loan. This document was not generated by the airport, but it was reviewed by County Legal, and we are requesting that the Board authorize the Chair to sign the document.
Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the lender acknowledgement, AAL-2022-2000, the landlord's release and consent for T-Hanger Hayden.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Matarri.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is a purchase and sale agreement with the City of Hayden Airport, and Kim Stevenson again.
Kim Stevenson again for the record. This is a purchase and sale agreement to the City of Hayden for two parcels in the northeast side of the airport. They total approximately 7.5 acres. The City of Hayden does own the structures on the, one of the parcels, and that parcel currently has a land lease to Lake Highway District that will be transferred with the property. We have followed all of the rules for that and are allowed to sell that property to whomever we want. And then this agreement just lines out closing costs and other terms such as price, the price being $2,98,993, payable within 90 days of the date of this agreement, although we are expecting it to be wrapped up within 30 to 60 days.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? I just wanted to make a quick comment. I'm very pleased that the City of Hayden is getting this property. There was a number of issues beforehand that really, it just, it should have gone to the city, it should never have been discussed, anything other, and so I'm happy that we're actually selling it. And with that, someone wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for purchase and sale agreement, City of Hayden Airport.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Matarri.
Aye. Next up is Resolution 2025-55. It's an airport land sale. It's the airport, and I believe that's the same issue here. Is it? Yep?
Yes.
Yes. Kim Stevenson for the record again. Resolution 2025-55 is for the land sale of the City of Hayden, outlines the Idaho Code section that we followed. We put the public sale notice in the newspaper on July 9th, and we are requesting that those funds be returned to the airport Fund 30, once received from the City of Hayden.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
Second.
I move that we approve Resolution 2025-55, which is the airport land sale to the City of Hayden and outlined in Idaho Code 318089, which is in the public's best interest, and we are very happy to have you as neighbors.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Matarri.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item 23. Board Approval Request. This is to ratify Resolution 2025-51 from July 15, 2025. It's from our business meeting. It's with community development. And this is really an issue that, there was a couple of things that happened. One, I was notified about, and I thought it was just a change on where the listing was on the business meeting. Turns out, it was a little bit more than that, and we didn't discuss the emergency nature of it, and that's why it's on today's meeting. So with that said, unless there's any questions, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion for the Board Approval Request, Ratify Resolution 2025-51, July 15, 2025, Business Meeting, Community Development Action.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Matarri.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item 24. Board Approval Request. This is a temporary overtime policy extension with our sheriff's office. And Sheriff Norris?
Commissioners, Kevin Smart for the record. This is a temporary overtime policy that we've had in place for multiple cycles in what appears here to my math to be almost a two-year period since we started that. So our request would be to, one, not only So our request would be to, one, not only continue that, but to expand it to just make this a permanent, uh, policy moving forward. Um, we aren't going to be outside of the, the window of what we're looking at for the needs for this for, for quite some time still. We still have many vacancies in many areas. Um, this is a standard of practice in multiple areas around the country. These are essential services that are never going to go away. They are shift work. Um, and every time, you know, some, these things pop up, there's, there's spur of the moment. They aren't able to be planned. You know, many of the items that we do plan, we're getting reimbursed through a contract of some other, uh, fees or, um, avenue anyway. These are ones that pop up that we can't plan. And so when a deputy incurs the overtime and then for whatever unforeseen in that two-week period, had a holiday, a vacation or something pop up, they end up reverting back to straight time. And we're actually hurting our staff by attempting to help us, um, in these areas. And so that would be our request is to move this forward as a, a permanent policy, uh, carrying it on from here.
Thoughts?
Um, I'm still uncomfortable with the permanency of, um, including the holiday and comp time. Um, again, I, I still see that they have a bunch of training to do with their patrol. So even though they're full or near full, um, I understand that they're not, um, 100% up and running. So I'm comfortable with another six-month extension. Or if you wanted to make it permanent, we can discuss the holiday and the comp.
Commissioner Everly. And just for your benefit, th- this is something that we've been dealing with, uh, at least two or three times beforehand. And it has to do with, uh, years, you know? Well, maybe you did deal with it before. But, uh, using vacation time, staff, they were so short-staffed over there that, uh, when they use vacation time, which people should have vacation time, they should be able to take a break from the work because a lot of people were putting in a lot of overtime, that, uh, when they took that time off, it ended up creating a situation where they came back to work, they were still on regular time. And those hours from the vacation couldn't be used towards the regular time. And, uh, so it would, um, they would still end up working a lot of hours. But that's really where that's at. And, uh, so if you have any thoughts on it?
What would be the problems?
Well, I mean, it's, it's the cost. In, uh, year-to-date, we're at 285,000. Last year was 292,000, uh, or I'm sorry, projected of FY '26 is 292,000. So the, um, overtime gets quite expensive when you're including holidays and comp time. I guess my concern is if you're looking at an 80-hour week and you take an hour of comp time and you work your full 80 hours, now you're getting time and a half for taking a half, uh, an hour off. So that's all. I just think that it's...
You know, I think one of the things that, at least the sheriff's office should be aware of is the fact that, you know, by offering this, having this benefit, if you will, and granted, other departments, from what you said, Captain Smart, they offer this similar thing, is that this is money that will go to these employees that will not be available for other things in the future. So that's the one thing I think we just have to be cognizant of, is that if, if we're going to offer this as a benefit, that takes away from anything else you might need come each fiscal year.
It's definitely a, yes, it's a budget impact event that we're asking you to do. But it is, it's benefiting our employees, um, longevity, uh, for them to stay with us, knowing that we do care about them in this regard, that, that their time is valuable, that although, yes, we, you did take some time off over here for mental health, physical health, that the downtime that you need over here, we didn't hit you in the, in the pocketbook when you came back to help us in a time.
Understood. Understood. Sheriff Norris?
Robert Norris, Sheriff. Um, this sheriff's office needs your support to be able to have an organization that can respond to the needs of this community. And we need to be competitive. This is an industry standard throughout, right here in the Pacific Northwest, that is offered to other agencies. So it's industry standard. This is what we're asking. Make it to, or make it for another six months or a year. And then come back and we can present to you maybe a more aggressive program. But this is what it's going to take for us to maintain our organization so we don't start losing people. And it's an industry standard, it's part cost of doing business.
Well, I would be open to extending it another six months, no problem. But I do think that it needs to be looked at with a little more of a presentation, a little bit more of, here's the other agencies around here that offer that. Uh, because we're also losing deputies to other local agencies. So if they're offering it, then I could see that being a benefit, uh, to, for retention.
I, I, are we losing people to other agencies? I haven't heard of any.
We haven't lost, uh, patrol to patrol.
Well...
Maybe custody, jail to patrol, but that's really...
I'm just saying, not because of this one issue.
Sure.
But because of the fact that, you know, we do lose to others. So we're trying to remain competitive with the, the other local agencies as far as...
Certainly in the past we have, yes.
Yes. Uh, Commissioner Everly?
I would propose that we, um, let this ride for, uh, another year and see what takes place.
I mean, we were going to do six months. You want to do six months or you want to do a year?
Well, six months.
I mean, we've been doing it for a couple of years already, I think, right now.
I think we do need to get to a point where we make it permanent. So I, I'd be more comfortable with six months. And then that way they know, understand what data we might be looking for to have a, um, presentation. This was put on the business meeting instead of an, an HR meeting because we just came up against the hard deadline and we can't have payroll, you know, not knowing what to do, so.
Well, then let's do it for six months then.
Okay.
All right. Well, with that said, and the sheriff's office is good with that comeback? Let's not let it expire. Let's be proactive. Um, I'll take a motion.
I move that we extend the temporary overtime policy for six months.
Second.
Commissioner Everly.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Tari.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you all. Next up, item 25. This is a board approval request, exterior concrete repair and replacement administration campus with CR Concrete Building and Grounds. And we have our director, Jeff Fuller, here.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, before you is a proposal, as you mentioned, from CR Concrete to replace a lot of the exterior stairs throughout the admin campus. If you look around the campus, a lot of those are in pretty bad shape. Um, they've been replaced, repaired a couple of times over the years. They're at a point where they probably need to be demoed and replaced. Um, I put some photos in your board packet so you can see the exact areas that we are looking at. Um, there are nine different locations that we would be removing and replacing concrete. Um, the total cost of this is $72,260. In, uh, FY '24, there was $59,188 that was approved for concrete resurfacing. Um, the intent was, I think, to kind of resurface over that concrete again. That company actually quit returning our calls, um, and so that job was never completed. And I think actually repairing and replacing is probably the most appropriate, um, way to go right now. So, um, I would propose that we allocate that $59,188 that is already approved, um, in the five-year plan budget and then additionally add $13,072 for fund balance to fully fund this project.
I'll make a motion to, um, board approval request, exterior concrete repair and replacement administration campus, Cameron Riley Concrete Building and Grounds.
Um, I'll, I'll second that with money coming from fund balance, five-year plan.
Commissioner Everly.
Second.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Tari.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item 26, contract CMGC services with Geno Construction, Coroner's Autopsy Lab with Building and Grounds. And then we have Director Bowler again.
Thank you, commissioners. Um, this is the contract for the CMGC services with Geno Construction. Um, we approved them to be the CMGC, but it's just the formal contract. It has been reviewed and approved by legal. Um, just for clarification, it includes $12,500 in upfront costs that go into the, um, design services. So they joined the design team. And then they will be working towards giving us a guaranteed maximum price with a budget just over a million dollars for that. So that $12,500 will need to be, um, formally approved out of fund balance and added, um, into the, the plan for that. Um, and that money was previously earmarked in that fund balance meeting. So it would come out of that, earmarked money out of the fund balance.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Uh, no, just making a comment that, again, it's a phased approach where we're just committing to $12,500. We're not committing to the entire lab right now. They have to come back and tell us, you know, what they can give us for a million bucks, which is our, essentially our theoretical, um...
Yes. And, uh, I think it's important to note that, I mean, we're looking for like a turnkey lab with a million. That's how this was presented to the board. So soft costs, any other costs that are associated with this have got to be included in that. And I would propose that we use, uh, at least this $12,500, uh, or $12,000, you know? Use that out of the already allocated funds and not put additional funds. If we decide to go forward, we can make that change later.
Yep. Yep.
So Commissioner Everly, you good with that?
That's good.
All right. I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the contract for the CMGC services with Geno Construction for the Coroner's Autopsy Lab.
Second.
Commissioner Everly.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Tari.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item 28. This is, uh, well, it's a status update item. Uh, Department of Justice mandate website accessibility standard WCAG 2.2. It's a discussion item. And we have our Director of IT, James Martin, here.
Good afternoon, commissioners. James Martin for the record. This is, as you said, informational. Um, recently, the Department of Justice mandated that any government organization with a population serving over 50,000 adhere to W, uh, website content accessibility guidelines. Previously, it was just a strong suggestion. Now it's being mandated that it needs to be in place by April 24th of 2026. And otherwise potentially be subject to lawsuits and fines. Um, in the past, we've always done our best when uploading website content to make sure it was site accessible. Uh, making sure things like the photos were color-contrasted properly, uh, our hyperlinks were well-defined. Uh, we had alt text on our photos. But the new guidelines are much more complicated and in-depth. We just don't have the in-house experience to keep up with it. So, um, and also a lot of, uh, departments upload their own website content, like, uh, BOCC assessors, parsing waterways and elections. So we don't have control over who uploads the content in those, in a certain number of cases. Um, so what we did is, like a number of other agencies, we're looking at experts in this field, software vendors that, uh, are experts in website accessibility. We looked at UserWay, Accessiby, and AudioY. AudioY happens to be a partner with our website vendors, sort of plus, excuse me, sorry. Um, and we also like their product the best. They, their software looks for s- over 70 different accessibility issues. Their AI fixes immediately about half of them. The other half is remediated by in-house staff that they have that are, uh, have handicap accessibility issues themselves. Uh, so it stands on. And this is for the sheriff's soft, uh, website as well as the county's website. Pricing-wise, we're looking at, uh, between the ones, prices we got back between 13 and 15,000 per year. AudioY is willing to, um, prorate a couple of months for $2,100 and give us 10 months free, which would get us, so our, our first major payment would be not until FY 2027, um, for that cost. In addition to our good, uh, need to meet the needs of our website, accessible citizens that use our website, I'm also concerned about, uh, potential lawsuits and fines that could come our way. It sounds like scare tactics, but it's already happening where different agencies are being sued for not meeting website, perhaps it was now a mandate. So my plan would be, um, in hopes that you would sign a contract, bring you something in the next few weeks for signature. Again, that would be with AudioY. We'd have to pay $2,100 this year. I've already put aside, I knew this was coming, just sent out pricing yet. I put $10,000 in our consulting flight item fee, so we have the money to pay for it. We have to adjust it a little bit for FY 2027. But it wouldn't be a budgetary issue at this time. Um, I, just, this will be super quick, I promise. Just to show you what it would look like, this is the AudioY, um, interface. So that if a user comes on to the county website, they would see things like, they would be able to make their cursor bigger, contrast of photos. These are the things that, um, spacing, font, changes the font. I promise we're getting close to the end. Things like images, this is the alt text that I was telling you that we do. Screen readers for handicapped people, it will actually read aloud if, uh, for someone that's blind or, or can't see too well.
When you say screen readers, you mean like, uh, you'll hear something through the speakers of your computer?
Yes, yes, for people that can't.
Like a description of the, whatever is put as a description for the file, the, the image?
The program would go through, read what's on the screen. And, um, that's why alt text has to be there for, um, so they can see or hear what the photo is, a picture of.
Can you go back to the font?
Yes.
And does it give you, um, I see that sans serif. Is that just two serif and, oh, they do have dyslexic, perfect.
This, while not guaranteed, that it, it would, it would set up the county as much as possible for not facing fines or lawsuits. And I brought, I asked Pat from the able to come along in case she had any question from her risk standpoint too. I, I know this will be on board, we've talked about this, um, as well. Bonner County uses the product I mentioned called Accessiby. Uh, it does meet all the mandates, but it's a little more expensive. I don't like it as well. I don't think our public would like it as well. But it is a good product. I mean, it's, um, one of the main players in the accessibility standard, uh, environment.
I like the other ones with the little tiles that you can click on.
I do too. I think it's more user-friendly.
Yep.
Um, sorry if I ended it short, but that's really all I had to bring to you today, unless you have questions for Pat Everly.
Questions?
No, I'm fine with bringing a contract forward.
I have a couple of questions. I'm just curious, when did the DOJ make this, uh, pronouncement?
It was...
Before January 20th of this year?
Yeah, it was before January 20th, but there's been no change in that from, coming from the Trump administration at this, you know, thus far at this time.
Yeah, well, I would presume they had higher priorities once they took office than...
Play possibly, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and again, it's a year-to-year thing. So if we, if they change the things and we choose not to renew...
Oh, no, I agree. I understand completely. I was just curious when the, when that directive came out.
Well, and again, you have a s- government agency making law? That's always my favorite.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, I mean...
You mean their rulemaking capabilities? Oh, yeah.
Right.
Force and effective law.
Yeah, I mean, it's under authority of ADA, but you're, you're right. Um, you know, I was often, we, uh... You know? I kind of have issues with that myself, but at the same time, uh, I think this would be better. I think this would be good for our citizens to have.
Yep. Agreed.
For our website.
Well, for a couple of grand to get it started, it's probably worth it.
10 months free, but it's, yeah. They, they may go longer, but they were willing to give us 10 months free the other 10, 20, or weren't willing to do that.
Okay. All right. Well, I guess you have direction.
Yes, sir. You'll see me in a couple of weeks soon.
Thank you.
All righty.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. That completes the business. A public comment.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, Eddie Priest for the record. Here is a citizen of Hayden. Yeah, I'm a council member, but I'm speaking as a citizen right now. Uh, there are reasons why candidates lose multiple election bids. Trust is a primary reason. If a person or candidate cannot be trusted to get accurate information, then they probably will not win. If a person or candidate spreads false information, then they probably will not win. Okay? I'd like to give some accurate information to rebut, uh, what was said on the record at this podium at a budget meeting a couple of weeks ago about Hayden. Mr. Hartman claimed that the citizens of Hayden did not pass the levy for law enforcement. Okay? Let me give some verifiable, correct information regarding the people's vote related to funding law enforcement in the city of Hayden. law enforcement in the City of Hayden. The question on the November 22 ballot asks the citizens if they would increase the base tax budget $543,000 to papers, the increase to fund the sheriff contract with the city. In fact, the citizens of Hayden did pass the levy tax increase in the amount of $543,000 to fund the sheriff contract, but I believe it was a 63% vote. Again, contrary to misinformation Mr. Hartman spread to the people in this room, on the record, watching, or eventually watching, the citizens of Hayden did pass that ballot question and did, in fact, increase the amount requested to meet the sheriff contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on down, and please just make sure you address the board.
Mr. Ron Hartman for the record. I did make a mistake. I apologize for that. That is my error. I'm on record now for saying that. But the other thing, along with this Hayden contract, Commissioner Duncan, you mentioned that the rest of the county could benefit from additional law enforcement inside the city limits of Hayden. I would tend, I would strongly disagree with that. I live south down in the county at Stevens Point. I look across at Arrow Point. I have had to make a call to 911 because I had a trespasser on my property that would not leave. I made the call visible to him to 911. It took a deputy 45 minutes to get to my house while I'm looking at the trespasser. Now, I fail to see that somebody in Hayden can improve that time very much, and I'm not down and worry, and I'm not across on the other side in Harrison, or I'm not up in Assle, and for me to pay more when I'm getting expected that that's going to improve my response time call, I don't see it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody on the telephone? 2:49, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
This thing was faulty.